So hello and welcome to the first meeting of the Task Force to Reimagine Policing in Brookline. I'm Raul Fernandez, a Brookline Select Board member and Chair of the Task Force. Members of the public can learn more about our charge on the BrooklineMA.gov website under Boards and Commissions. You may also be interested in the Select Board's Committee on Policing Reform, a separate and also important body that this Task Force will occasionally meet with. In a moment, I'll take some time to discuss our charge and provide some context that will help frame the work of the Task Force. But first, I'd briefly like to introduce the members of the Task Force to the public and have them sworn in by Assistant Town Clerk Linda Goldberg. So our members include Mike Sandman, Chair of Brookline's Advisory Committee and a Board Member of SCORE Mentors; Bonnie Bastian, a Town Meeting Member and Artist, a Volunteer with the Massachusetts Bail Fund and a Member of Brookline for Racial Justice and Equity and Brookline Budget Justice; Malcolm Clawthorn, the MECO Coordinator at Brookline High School and a Member of the Commission for Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations; Almas Dosa, the Director of Home and Community-Based Fee-for-Service Programs at the Mass Health Office of Long-Term Service and Supports and a Member of the Racial Justice Action Committee at First Parish in Brookline; Aetan Hirsch, an Associate Professor of Political Science and Civic Studies at Tufts University, a Data Scientist and a Board Member of Brookline for Everyone; Kimberly Richardson, a Judicial Secretary at the Roxbury Trial Court, a Graduate Student at BU School of Social Work and a Board Member of Brookline for Racial Justice and Equity; Kristin Singleton, the Director of Knowledge and Technological Services at Education Resource Strategies, a National Education Nonprofit; Anne Weaver, a Town Meeting Member and Licensed Mental Health Counselor and an Adjunct Professor of Counseling, Victimology, and Trauma and Crisis Intervention; Alexander Weinste, a Third-Year Law Student at Boston University, a Board Member of the National Transgender Bar Association and a Legal Intern in the Mass Attorney General's Office; Chi Chi Wu, a Staff Attorney at National Consumer Law Center and a Member of the Brookline Asian American Family Network Steering Committee; and I will serve as Chair, a Brookline Select Board Member and Associate Dean for Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion at BU's Wheelock College of Education and Human Development. The Task Force's charge included membership diversity requirements, and I'm proud that this group not just meets but exceeds those requirements. There are six members of color, including three Black, one Latinx, and two Asian members, as well as five women and one transgender member. Immigrants and one Brookline Housing Authority resident are also included among our members. As a group, we represent a wide variety of ages, identities, and experiences. I'm confident that this is the right team to get the job done, and I'm looking forward to serving with you all. A number of staff members have also been tasked to support our work as non-voting members. They include Town Administrator Mel Kleckner, Chief Diversity Officer Lloyd Jellino, Human Resources Director Anne Braga, and Associate Town Council Michael Downey. We'll also be joined by former Brookline Police Chief Dan O'Leary, who will be our liaison to the department. Last but not certainly not least, Devin Williams will provide direct administrative support to the Task Force, should keep us operating efficiently and on task as always. So with those introductions taken care of, Assistant Town Clerk Linda Goldberg, will you please do the honors, swear in our voting members, and let us know anything else we need to know along the way?
Welcome. I'm going to ask you to raise your right hand, and I'll read the oath. And then I'd just like to explain the package that I'm going to send out to you. Do you solemnly swear and affirm that you faithfully and impartially discharge all the duties incumbent upon you as a Member of the Task Force to reimagine policing in Brookline according to the best of your ability and understanding, agreeably to the rules and regulations of the Constitution, the laws of the Commonwealth, and then the rules, regulations, and bylaws made under authority thereon? Please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you very much. Congratulations. After the election, probably a week after the election, I will be sending out a by-mail card that looks like this, and it's double-sided. Have you complete? And there'll be two forms to fill out. And one is a certificate receipt of open meeting law materials. The second one is the summary of the Conflict of Interest Laws. Not a big package, but I'd like you to fill that out also and return it to me. I'll send you an envelope to return it. And that completes, that would complete the other part of the swearing. Good luck and have a good meeting. Thanks.
Thanks so much, and good luck with your final preparations for the primary. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Take care.
Yeah. All right. Congratulations, and thank you all in advance for your service. I just want to say a few introductory remarks and then hear from each of you. So as you know, this work comes at a crucial time when there is tremendous political pressure spurred by the worldwide movement for Black Lives, including thousands protesting here in Brookline in the wake of the murders by police of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, Rashard Brooks, and too many other Black Indigenous and other people of color. By some miracle, Jacob Blake narrowly escaped the same fate. Sunday in Kenosha, Wisconsin, he was shot in the back by a police officer seven times in front of his kids. His near murder provides further evidence of the need for us to move urgently and expeditiously in our work. Unless you think our work is just about what happened to George Floyd in Minneapolis or Breonna Taylor in Louisiana, I'm sorry Louisville, or Jacob Blake in Kenosha, don't be confused, this could happen here too. Imagine the day before those murders, there were officers and there are chiefs in those cities who said, "Not here. We have the right training and body cams that have implemented a bunch of those eight can't wait policies, you name it." And still, George Floyd and Breonna Taylor are dead, and Jacob Blake may never walk again. But our work doesn't just concern itself with the murders of people of color or the general lack of safety, transparency, and accountability of policing, but also the everyday impacts policing has on communities of color, women, LGBTQ people, and other marginalized groups. Our work also comes amidst concerns about our own Brookline Police Department, issues related to use of force, the profiling harassment of Black people, especially our youth. Many of us also recall the two officers of color who blew the whistle on racial animus in the department. Unfortunately, the hiring of younger and more diverse police officers won't be enough to save us. Thus, the need for reimagining a new way forward. Make no mistake, the work of this Task Force is political and will be appropriately scrutinized by those in positions of power as well as those who are organizing for change. I'm confident we'll meet this challenge with the professionalism, urgency, humility, and determination that this moment requires. The charge of the Task Force to reimagine policing in Brookline, as approved by the Brookline Select Board, is to explore and recommend new approaches to public safety and policing in Brookline. As our charge states, the Task Force will utilize a data-informed approach to interrogate our current model and provide a distinctly alternative approach to public safety. As a group, the Task Force will seek to understand our current approach to public safety, explore alternative models of public safety in the U.S. and abroad, conceptualize new models of public safety that have yet to be imagined, consider which police functions are better suited for other departments, solicit public feedback and ideas through robust community engagement, make recommendations for meaningful changes that can be enacted by the Select Board, Town Meeting, School Committee, or other relevant bodies, make legislative recommendations to our state congressional representatives, and engage in other tasks determined by the Task Force members and community input. We've been charged to provide the Select Board with interim recommendations including any FY21 budget adjustments by October 15, 2020, and to submit final recommendations, including FY22 warrant articles and budget recommendations, by February 1, 2021. This is an aggressive timeline, but one that's helped by the fact that the Separate Committee on Policing Reforms will be shouldering much of the load with respect to important issues like the police claim process, use of force policies, and other procedural matters. Addressing police reforms is critical, and so is our work, presenting an alternative vision of public safety that prioritizes the most vulnerable and marginalized in our community. I first proposed the creation of this Task Force on June 3 in an article entitled, "We Need a Task Force to Reimagine Policing in Brookline and Everywhere." It was subtitled, "Let's Rethink Our Entire Relationship with Police." It was based on a simple premise, that a community holds the power to determine its own approach to community safety, which includes determining if and how police should be part of that approach. As I said in the piece, clearly there are members of our community and those in our neighboring communities for which Brookline's current model is simply not working. That those community members are most often Black is no coincidence. There are centuries-long reasons for this rooted in causes that are external to policing as well as those that are intrinsic to policing. Beyond those of us that have been profiled, brutalized, and traumatized by inequitable policing in Brookline and beyond, I've also heard loud and clear from many white residents that changes to our policing are both necessary and urgent, literally a matter of life and death. I'm glad to live in a community where such a multiracial coalition has stepped up and actively challenged conventional systems which by design or neglect have taken Black lives and set out nearly insurmountable challenges for those who remain. It's taken some work to get here, to say the least. But I'm glad we finally created this Task Force, and I want to talk for a moment about the word at the heart of it, reimagining. The work of reimagining is by its very definition bold and imaginative, but it should also be data-informed. We'll be reviewing alternative models of public safety in the U.S. and abroad, and we'll take a research-informed approach to understand what might work for us here in Brookline. We'll look inward too. We'll review 911 dispatch calls, direct calls for service to Brookline Police, and other data to better understand the needs of our community and how we might be able to meet them through means other than the deployment of armed police officers. Likewise, we'll challenge the Brookline Police Department to present their own data, which provide empirical evidence that programs like School Resource Officers, VHA Walk and Talk Up Officers, and other programs produce positive results for people of color and to demonstrate that they're worth the cost to our community financially and in other ways. We'll engage deeply with the community, so that's data too, through town halls and one-on-one meetings, and through meetings with the soon-to-be-selected group of community consultants. Along the way, the members of this Task Force will determine where we focus and prioritize our efforts. But let's be clear, our work will necessarily be critical of our current model. As I've said many times before, this is not about good or bad officers, leaders of departments. This is about systems and policies. It's about our entire approach to public safety and social services. I propose we start the work of reimagining with a simple premise, that armed officers should only be deployed when there is no other reasonable alternative. Let's look at the data, and let's see what community needs currently being handled by police fail to meet that standard, and let's find alternatives. Ultimately, we'll decide as a community how we'll move forward through the votes of the Select Board, Town Meeting, School Committee, and other bodies. But it's important that this Task Force remains focused on our charge to provide a distinctly alternative vision of community safety that we can wrestle with and compare to our current approach, which so many of us agree is not working. With that, I want to provide each Board Member with about five minutes to introduce themselves to each other and to the public. Please do tell us your name, what brings you to this work, and what you'd like to see us focus on during our time together. I'll go ahead and just call on you, the way you appear on my screen. So Anne, it looks like you're up first.
Okay. Hi. Oops, my dog is gonna bark. Maybe go next, and I'll quiet the dog.
No problem at all. We'll come back to you. Bonnie, here next on my screen.
Hey. Pretty sure I don't need five minutes. But my name is Bonnie Bastian, Town Meeting Member for Precinct Five. I am a general organizer for Mutual Aid Brookline as well as a Member of Brookline Budget Justice, Bridge, and... And I come to this work because there are lots of people close to me that have been impacted by policing negatively in their life. And through my volunteer work with the Massachusetts Bail Fund, the closer I get to that work, the more I need to know, and the more I know, the more work needs to be done. And this work moves me a lot. This feels like my topic. This is what I want to be thinking about and what I am thinking about a lot. And so I'm very, very proud to be here, and I'm thrilled to be here with all of you, humbled to be here with all of you. And that's it. That's me.
Bonnie, are there some areas that are top of mind right now that you want to, just initially, you say, "I want to make sure we get to this"?
Yes. Sorry about that. I want to see us work really, really hard on the grassroots community organizing that needs to happen to make sure that we're doing everything we can to have this work led by the ideas of our neighbors that experienced the impacts of overpolicing in Brookline, because we will have zero relevance otherwise if we are not led by by the people that are impacted by this. We are doing the top-down decision-making that towns and cities are always guilty of. So I want to make sure that we don't do that, that when we say that we have a robust community engagement effort, I want that to be really, really true. So I'm gonna make that part of my mission here.
Absolutely. Appreciate you. Thanks, Bonnie. Anne, how you doing over there?
Okay. The dog is in the house. So hi, I'm Anne Weaver, and I'm delighted to be on this Task Force. Let's see. I am a Licensed Mental Health Counselor for about 20 or so years. My focus in mental health counseling has always been with folks who have not been served by the traditional mental health system, including people with chronic PTSD who are diagnosed instead with mental illness diagnoses, working from a harm reduction model, working from a trauma-informed model of care. I've worked at the VA for a number of years in an alternative to traditional mental health program called the PRC Psycho-Social Recovery and Rehabilitation Community. But I've since then mostly worked in private practice. So I come from that model of care in terms of what I envision working in the community that is community-centered, person-centered, peer-informed, peer-led. I have a background, my own personal experience with depression over my life, and come from a kind of peer... That's how I got into the work in the first place, was because I was unhappy about the way I was treated by the traditional mental health system that I was seen as a diagnosis versus a whole person. And that's what, that's what got me to go to school to get a master's in mental health counseling, so I could practice in a way and support people in a way that wasn't diagnosis first and person second, but work from a whole-person perspective. Since I got my degree, my master's, again, I've worked with marginalized people, people sort of not served by the traditional community, which led me to work with a lot of people who had been incarcerated and were continued to be incarcerated. I worked with a number of people who wouldn't show up for, and then it would be considered for something that really, a nonviolent crime to be incarcerated for. And that got me looking into the system of policing and criminal justice and incarceration. Since then, I've, I still practice as a clinician, but I primarily do research in both mental health alternatives, harm reduction models to mental health systems that are community-based versus medical model-based. And I've also, I'm finishing a PhD at Leslie University in the Education Department that is focused on the relationship between self-efficacy and self-esteem for incarcerated people and access to post-secondary prison education programs. So I've, my work has shifted in a way from, from practice to more research. I had the ability to teach at Norfolk MCI Prison last fall to a group of folks who were, who were in the BU program, college program. I taught them Introduction to Counseling, and it was a tremendous experience and a very valuable experience for me. And I'm hoping eventually to work to, to help in some way lead or support a system for incarcerated people and people who are previously incarcerated to help them merge back into society in a way that's successful for them. Not so much about whether or not there's recidivism, but more of a whole-person approach to how they're doing and what they need to be successful on the outside. So I'm delighted to be part of this, this Task Force. I live in Brookline. I have a marriage. I have two kids. My oldest kid is, he will hate me for even saying anything about him because he's a teenager, but he's 15 years old and he's Black. And he goes to BHS. And I'm also just concerned about his experiences in Brookline and his potential interactions with Brookline Police Department and hope to help transform the Brookline Police Department into a different kind of system where I don't have to worry about him when he steps out my door.
Anne, thank you so very much. Next up, I have Alexander. And Alexander, tell us, we've gone through this on the phone before, but tell us if you prefer Alexander or Alex. We'll use whichever, or something else.
Thank you. I do actually use both, which I know is a totally unhelpful answer. I'd say a slight preference for Alexander, but if you call me Alex, that's completely fine. It's good to meet everybody. One thing to just quickly correct the record. I interned at the Attorney General's Office last year in the Fair Labor Division last summer. So there's two kind of internship summers in law school. I mean, I'm just finishing up the second one now. I have a court hearing this afternoon for virtual video. So I set up in front of my closet door so that I look professional, wear my suit. This summer, I'm interning with the New Hampshire Public Defender.
Just so you know, your voice sounds a little low right now, so I don't know if it's getting close to the mic or something.
Thank you. Is that better?
Yeah.
Thanks for the heads up. I appreciate it. So I was really interested in joining this Task Force because I'm really passionate about this issue. I'm passionate particularly about police brutality. What I'm really hoping to contribute to the Task Force is something I'd like to see is a robust discussion of the ways in which policing and the various like patterns of policing affects the legal cases of criminal defendants and affects the lives of criminal defendants. I reach out to, I have seen such a wide variety of horrible and bizarre behavior by police officers from the perspective of Defense Counsel just in the short summer that I've been doing this and a little bit in the criminal clinic as well at BU. So I'm very young, very early in my career, I'm very white. I have never personally experienced a bad encounter with police, but I know a lot of people who have, and I've seen a lot of it on video intimately in discovery from prosecutors. I've seen it in things that we are not being provided by prosecutors, by police. And so I'm really interested in the ways in which reimagining policing will intersect with the larger criminal legal system. I think there's a lot of work to be done there. I think there's a lot of ways in which our work can intersect with reforms around prosecution. I'm encouraged by the work of a bunch of people who want to come into prosecution as progressive prosecutors. There's a lot of people who are very wary of that, I think for very good reasons. And I'm one of them, and we've seen, you know, DA Rachel Rollins trying to do a lot of good work. And then I also talk to Defense Counsel who do a lot of post-conviction defense, especially on innocence appeals. Her department isn't what she says it is. I will routinely make objections that just fly in the face of reason. And I think there's a lot of people getting involved in the criminal legal system who are just evil. I think there's a lot of people involved in the criminal legal system who think they're doing good and they're not. That's sort of a long way of saying, I'd like to see us look at this also from the perspective of how policing impacts not just people's lives, which I see is most of our work, but also particularly criminal cases, which then affect people's lives in myriad ways that waterfall for the rest of their lives.
Great. Thank you, Alexander. Appreciate you. Kristin?
Good morning, everybody. As has been said earlier, I'm really appreciative of the opportunity to be on this Task Force. And I'll be very brief in helping you get to know me. My name's Kristin Singleton. I have lived in Brookline for roughly 10 years. Moved to Brookline when both of my daughters were, now older daughter started kindergarten. She's entering into the high school next year. As Raul mentioned at the outset, I work in technology at a consulting firm, Education Resource Strategies, that focuses on systemic improvement nationwide in school systems, helping people think differently about the way that we use people's time and money. And my work largely involves using data, helping people think about the data that we can bring to bear for problem-solving, discussion, and planning. What brings me largely to this work is that I want to, quite simply, be more at ease in the place that I call home. I suspect majority of us feel that way, whether or not we have encounters with policing or not, but I think that it is among the things that, if we're going to be quite clear about it, is what I want for myself, it's what I want for people that look like me, it's what I want for all members of the Brookline community. And I think what has primarily encouraged me to try to avail myself of the opportunity that this Task Force presents has been a series of encounters that I've had with the public schools of Brookline over the past two years, starting in about the 2018 school year. As I know several members of this Task Force for Brookline for Racial Justice and Equity during the 2018 school year, as part of the AWARE program that is implemented in the public schools of Brookline, where police officers enter into the school to purportedly provide students with additional resources, support, guidance around things that are largely social, things that are largely related to how they move, how they operate as teenagers and in the community. That was particularly problematic for me. And I and a couple of other parents raised these concerns to the, to the school that my kids attended, to the central office. And we found over the course of two or three years, this repeated difficulty in trying to have conversations about why people who are in tactical gear and have weapons could come into a space that's largely meant for education, growth, and development, and then expect that it would be something that is considered comfortable, acceptable, reasonable, especially for students of color who don't have the same relationship with police officers as they enter into school space. And I was astounded at how difficult it was to even start a conversation about this. So I think the premise behind why we were So I think the, the premise behind why we were trying to organize to think differently about how we provide what are ultimately guidance, support and social services for students seems perfectly in keeping with the charge of this task force. So I think that is among the things that I, I would like us to continue considering, even if something is working or purported to be working, that we also look at, but what alternatives were ruled out before we accept that we're going to keep doing something because it's purportedly working. So I welcome the opportunity to be in dialogue and fellowship with all of you.
Thank you so much, Kristen. Malcolm.
Thank you, Raul. I'm Malcolm Cawthorn. I use he, him, his. Yeah. I am, I'm really excited to be on this task force. Also care a lot of history, which gives me, I guess, good and bad. So my family literally fought suit two different realtors to be able to live in Brookline in 1973. So that myself as the oldest and the rest of my siblings could attend Brookline Public Schools. I then moved back in 98 to become a teacher at Brookline High School. And with a similar motive for my girls to attend Brookline Public Schools and get an education that would give them opportunities in the future. With that being said, there's a lot of history of Cawthorns on record in terms of talking about policing. From all the things, even being a large person, being assumed I was older than I was, things like that. And I have a really distinct, I think, perspective and I, and I say that amidst some privilege as well as some realities so that the last time I was stopped by a Brooklyn Police Officer was in 98. That's actually a long time ago where I was told I essentially should be happy. You know, that police are trying to make sure my neighborhood was safe. Even though I've been in that neighborhood probably as long as that person had been alive. With that, I don't get stopped anymore. I think because of my things that have happened in Brookline, my father was highly involved with sports and things. Yo, I think many police officers see me and my children, my family as parts of Brookline. And so I've never heard my daughters talk about being stopped or anything like that. I am at the age where I have former youth coaches who are police officers. I have former classmates who are police officers and former students who are police officers. And so with that, I, I think, yo, people look at me and know if your last name was Cawthorn, you're supposed to be here. And so I don't get stopped. But then I work at Brookline High School and hear from children every year. There's not one year since 1998 where I haven't heard from at least one child about being stopped inappropriately. And so as much as I know it's not happening to me, I still know it happens. And that's what brings me to this work. Those stops when people are walking and moving, also auto stops. As well as I, I find it curious that as a school member, we're supposed to track our students' online presence and it feels as if the police do not have to do that for their officers. There are friends I went to high school with that I'm connected to on social media where some of their posts and things actually make me question their ability to be not necessarily objective, because I think humans are rarely objective. I think, you know, unbiased in their approaches to particularly black and brown folks. And even my Asian students and the few Native students I have, Native American students I have. And so it's really those big three things, walking, traffic stops, as well as monitoring online presence for, you know, people's unbiased view or people's biased views. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Malcolm. Thank you also for sharing your pronouns. Mine are he, him, his. I know other members are, some other members are sharing theirs in the chat. I'll invite anyone and everyone speaking to share your pronouns if you like. You're welcome to. I see Aton Hirsch next.
Hi, everyone. My name is Aton. Let's see professionally, I'm a professor at Tufts. I teach classes in theory in just a week, starting in a person on US elections and technology and politics. A lot of my work is on voting rights. I testify in court cases regularly, trying to bring data to conflicts over voting rights. I testified in Kansas, the state, on behalf of the ACLU. The state was claiming a lot of non-citizens were voting, brought data into that case. A lot of voting voter ID cases in Texas and other places. Always trying to basically get the facts right about who's affected by, by voting rights laws and, and what effect they'll have. Obviously, there's a lot of work like this involving COVID. I also do a lot of work in analytics. I wrote a book about campaign analytics and targeting of ads. Testified in the US Senate about the Cambridge Analytica Facebook scandal a little while ago. And a lot of my work is also on civic engagement, how people engage in politics. And sometimes how people's values that they convey, that they believe in their hearts or that they convey in public are not always reflected in their, in their actual behavior. And, and I feel very, very honored to be part of this, this committee, this task force. I've lived in Brookline since 2011. My wife was born and raised here. I'm involved in Brookline for everyone on the board there, working on housing issues for the community. My interactions with the police department here have been actually minimal except for I'm a leader in one of the Jewish communities here that meets at Kehlith Israel on Harvard Street and send my kids to the preschool there and following, you know, that's probably all you know. After, since 2016, there's been a big upsurge in anti-Semitic violence. And so there's been a lot of work in houses of worship on security. And so I've been able, I've been unfortunately had to have meetings with the police department on those issues as that building is probably the, the most Jewish building and the most Jewish street in the state. And so it feels like a target. But I think that this issue of policing and racial justice and targeted African Americans is a paramount issue really, and that none of us can really, really live in a democratic society unless everyone can walk around freely. I hope to be able to bring my professional background in, in data analysis and social science research to this conversation. For, and I think, Raul, if I was going to point to one issue that is really important to me, I would say that I'm thinking about from the start is the ways in which community feedback into the police department can create really negative repercussions. People calling the police when they shouldn't be calling the police. And how part of what our vision for a committee is, is also something tied to changing public minds about what the police are for and and helping people have a change of heart sometimes about what they do when they see someone walk in their neighborhood who they don't recognize. And, and how that can be part of reimagining policing too. With that, I'll leave you. But I'm just honored to be here. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Aton. Almas. You're still muted.
Yeah, sorry. I'm Almas Dosa. I am an Asian American. I'm originally from India. And I'm married to an African American. We've lived in Brookline for about over 30 years. My husband incidentally is on the other task force under Bernard Green. So we were both very excited about applying for these task forces and really honored, I'm really honored to be chosen. I, I work for Mass Health, which is Medicaid, a health insurance program for, as many of you know, for the poor and underprivileged. So basically I'm very focused on really serving, you know, the needs of the poor and underprivileged, disabled population. I have a background as a physical therapist, but I also have a master's in public health and a PhD in health policy. So do a lot of policy work in, where I work for a number of healthcare programs. Additionally, I have done some work with the Brooklyn Council of Aging and so been involved with the town as well. Did some research there a few years ago. And I also am a member of the Unitarian Church in Brookline, where I'm a member of the Racial Justice Committee and have done a lot of work in, you know, in reducing racial inequities within our church. So really passionately interested in not only raising awareness on racial justice issues, but also working on reducing structural inequities, not only in our church, but in the larger community. And so we've worked with Black Lives Matter Boston. We've done stuff for jobs, now jails. You know, we've organized various workshops within our church with an organization called DEEP, which perhaps some of you know, Disruptive Equity Education Project, which where we really worked at looking at our own structures in our church and have implemented lots of policy changes to, to reduce those inequities. So really given all this, like what brings me to this is, is all this background and this work that I've done. And I really love the title of this, reimagining. I mean, it's just, it just makes you feel like, gosh, you can go to so many places with this and I really love what Raul you said about the data-driven, the evidence-based research, which, you know, I feel it's so important to do that. So one of the things that I'm really interested in is really looking at the, the, the basic, the culture, like, like I really want to see like what, what, what is the culture here with the police, police department? What is, you know, what, what's the training that they get as far as, because I know there's training, there's diversity training, but I would really like to get into in-depth into that. How are they trained? What are, what are the things that they really, you know, do? And, and what's actually implemented? Like what's actually remembered? Like I feel like I would like to get more in-depth into that. I know we're going to be doing a lot of work on looking at current policies, what happens. So I'm excited about that. And then of course, looking at what's happening in the rest of the world and the rest of the country as far as what they're doing. But I think a lot of it's like the culture, like, you know, the, the whole thing, the military style stuff. Like I really feel like that's something we've really got to look at because that's the basic. It feels like that's the basis of all of the stuff that's happening. And if we can do something to change that, perhaps that'll, you know, that'll make a big difference. So really, you know, those are the things that I'm interested in. I know that, you know, we, people have talked about investment and, and individuals and communities and basically that police, the police force do a lot of things that they're not supposed to. So I won't go into that. I know we're going to look at that as well as far as having other, and a lot of the articles that Raul sent us as well, talk about that. So I think that, I mean, those are the main things that I'm interested in and why I'm passionately interested in this work. Again, looking at inequities again within, within the police department and what are the structural changes we can make basically. So, thank you.
Great. Thanks, Almas. Kimberly.
Hi, good morning. I'm Kimberly Richardson. I use she, her, her pronouns. I actually struggled with joining this task force. Kind of thought like, hmm, this is not a place I should be. And then I, a friend of mine reached out to me. He's like, are you going to apply? You should really apply. Your voice needs to be heard. And so I did. I, I'm here, I think, for several reasons. One, working for the trial court for many years, like over 23 years. And I used to want to be an attorney and working in the court and seeing so many people of color, specifically black boys and brown boys come through the court system, really changed my mind. As a mother of six black young men, I, I feel like that's probably the major reason I'm here because I don't sleep some nights when they leave the house because I'm afraid what might happen to them just because of the color of their skin. And I moved in Brookline in 2012. I live in Brookline Housing. That was another, you know, like, do you really want to do that? Do you want to put yourself out there? Will you be retaliated against because of that? Like I struggle a lot, you know, I, I'm a single mom. I live in Brookline Housing. But my voice should be heard and I'm here. So, you know, I'll give a really quick personal story about my son's interaction with the police. I moved to Brookline in 2012. My son was stopped just walking home, questioning why he was here. And my, my, at the time I said to him, just don't wear a hoodie. I shouldn't have to tell my son not to wear a hoodie. He should be able to wear what he wants. Another of my, one of my son's younger son who went to Brookline High, simply walked in his friend home from school and she was a white girl and a police officer told him not to walk his daughter home anymore. And I thought that was crazy. And lastly, two of my sons who never had any interaction with the police whatsoever, went to private school and one day, and this is not Brookline Police, this is police in general. And coming out of the bar, find themselves in handcuffs simply because of the color of their skin. So that's why I'm here. What would I, what do I want to see happen or what I am looking for? I just, one, I really hope that what we're doing here is not what you like busy work. Like I want it to really matter. I don't want to have so many things on my plate. And I don't want to waste my time because I just don't have time to waste. So I really want to see, I don't, I don't hear stories about people of color saying they drove through Brookline and I got stopped because I was black. That's exhausting. And so I just want to see some real change. So, thank you.
Appreciate that. Same here. Chi Chi.
Thanks, Raul. And thank you, Kimberly, for those powerful stories. My name's Chi Chi Wu. I use she, her, hers. I've been a Brookline resident for 27 years. And I think one of the reasons I joined this task force is that in those 27 years, I've been really struck between the disconnect between Brookline's reputation as a progressive community and how that is not reflected in the town's policies, the town's decision-making. And feel really strongly that Brookline should be part of the conversation. It would be just a total embarrassment if Brookline was not part of the work and the conversation about reimagining and restructuring policing. If Eugene, Oregon and Camden, New Jersey can radically revamp their, how, how they address policing, for God's sakes, a rich, well-educated, supposedly progressive community like Brookline ought to be able to do it. A bit about me personally, I am an attorney by training. I work, I'm not a criminal attorney. I don't deal with the criminal justice system. I, my field is consumer law. I work for the National Consumer Law Center. Of course, I'm doing this in a personal capacity. I have to make that clear. My only intersection with the criminal justice system as a professional is that I did serve on the State Judicial Nominating Commission for four years. And to get an interesting perspective about how judges are selected in, in this state. Not a bad perspective, but you know, one of the things that I did constantly struggle with is raising racial justice issues and implicit bias in those conversations. I've been very active with, on racial justice issues and the Asian American community for many, many years. Both statewide and about 10 years ago, myself and several others founded the Brookline Asian American Family Network, which focuses on the Brookline schools and supporting the needs of Asian and Asian American children and their family in those schools. As most of you probably know, As most of you probably know, if you look at Brookline, the largest racial minority is Asian-Americans and we make up about one in six residents. Also, on a personal level, part of the reason I am doing this is because one of my close, personal friends is one of the two officers that Raoul mentioned in his opening remarks, who were the subject of racial harassment. And when they attempted to seek redress, were instead fired by the town. And it just horrified me. I saw what a har- terrible personal toll it took. And it really angered me and troubled me that if a fellow police officer could be treated in this way by the police, what does that say about how the police treat black and brown residents and other folks of color coming through this town? You know, one of the things that really struck me about what's happening in Kenosha is that a black man who was not being a threat was shot seven times in the, in the back. A white supremacist carrying an AK-47 illegally killed two people, shot a third, and the police just waved him by. And what does that say about white supremacy and who's on the police force? And I really think we need to examine that in all police departments, including Brookline.
Thank you, Chi Chi. Mike?
Hi, I'm, I'm Mike Sandman. I'm a town meeting member from Precinct Three and the Chair of the Advisory Committee. The Advisory Committee is the Town Finance Committee. So one reason I'm here is to explain how resources are currently allocated and to help rethink how they can be, or help think about how they can be reallocated. I'm retired, but I'm definitely not here to represent the old white guy demographic. But just the same, I'm old enough to have interviewed Malcolm X when I was in college and writing for the college newspaper. And when he talked about the way that white society repressed black Americans, honestly, I didn't understand what the hell he was talking about. From my perspective, living in the North, I thought everything was just fine up here and it's all the people down south who are doing things wrong. And when I got out into the world, into the army, and then in business, I came to understand a lot more, to learn a lot more, and I'm still learning. Malcolm, not Malcolm X, but Malcolm Kothman, just spoke about driving while black in Brookline, driving while black, driving while brown. And I have an Indian son-in-law with firsthand experience with driving while being a person of color and a daughter who's a public defender in the Roxbury District Court and who talks about her clients' experiences with the police. She's been in Norfolk County, Middlesex County. She's now back in, in Roxbury, where she says the, the clients are more interesting and have more interesting stories to tell and need more help than, than folks in the suburbs. So I get her stories and, like I said, I'm still learning and hear just as much to learn as I am to help you learn about the town budget.
Appreciate you, Mike. Thank you. I'd like to take a few moments now. I believe folks moved around on my screen a bit, but I think we've got all the voting members of the, of the committee. Want to take a few moments now for the town administrator, department heads, town staff, and for former Chief O'Leary to introduce themselves as well, to share anything you'd like to. Mel? And you're muted. And you're muted, Mel.
Thank you. I, first of all, want to say thank you to all of the residents of this town who are stepping up and participating in this very important initiative. Takes a lot of time and effort and really appreciate all of your commitment to do so. I just really wanted to say that we're here, I'm here, and the other staff are here to support you, to, to support whatever research or things you want to learn about. I think, you know, you're all able to reimagine and, you know, I'm not sure that we can, you know, help that, but if we can, we want to. But I think our role is to support you. So whether it's learning how systems work that support the police department, budget systems, state civil service system, the training system that, that exists in Massachusetts that the Brookline Police Department participate in, some of the other training and things that, that, that happens. You know, we're here to support that and make sure that you understand what's going on so that it will support your, your work on reimagining. So other than that, I just want to say thank you again and look forward to working with the task force.
Mel, thank you and thanks for your support. Ann, I see you next.
Okay, thank you. My name is Ann Braga. I'm the HR Director for the Town of Brookline. And I come to you, as, as Mel said, as a support, but also someone who's invested in having quality services across all of the departments that provide the best to all of Brookline's residents, regardless of where they come from, what, what part of the community they represent. I come from a background, I, I grew up in Connecticut, but have been in Bos- living in Boston for the last 30 years. I have two, two boys who don't face the challenges of being people of color. But both of my boys do go to schools where they are in the minority. But they, they work and, and, you know, are, are living in that environment, but embrace that and I'm trying to raise good humans. So I, I come to that, that HR perspective from raising good humans as a mom and hope that that perspective comes through. And as we look to implement HR processes and hiring and retention and all of those kind of things that, that component in how you reimagine on the front end for human resources for hiring, recruiting, retention, discipline, promotion can, can be of assistance and those, that piece of information. So I look forward to providing resources and assistance and whatever I can do to help.
Thanks, Ann. Appreciate you being with us. Lloyd?
Good morning. I just want to say that I'm the Chief Diversity Officer and the Director of the Office of Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations for the Town of Brookline. I just want, I'm not going to echo what Mel and Ann said, but I think this is an exciting opportunity for the town. I think we're moving forward that all the departments, including my own, there's an opportunity for evolution here. And it's exciting to see that we're starting with a blank slate and seeing what we can build from that. I think we have a lot of great talent here in this group and I'm looking forward to seeing what we can do. Thank you for letting me be part of it.
Thanks, Lloyd. Appreciate you. Michael?
Thank you, Raoul. And as Lloyd mentioned, thank you, everyone, for allowing me to be a part of this. I am, you know, honored to be a part of it. And so I'm an Associate Town Council in Town Council's office. My name's Michael Downey. I've been here for, with the town for just over a year now. And one thing that I have experienced and kind of come to understand is that the town and its residents are very passionate, dedicated, and devoted to the town and to the issues within the town. And I do find that to be admirable. And, and so I think this is just one demonstration of that. And so I'm, I'm honored to be a part of that as much as I can help or, or contribute. It'd be great, but, um, but again, thank you for having me and I look forward to continuing on with this group.
Appreciate you, Mike. Dan?
Morning, everybody, and thank you, Raoul. I, I want to thank everybody for letting me join in as well. And a little bit about my background, I grew up in Brookline. I, I lived there all through my childhood. I graduated from St. Mary's School. I graduated from Brookline High School and then went away to college. When I came back, I joined the police department and I was a member of the police department for a little over 40 years. The final 23 years as chief. Through that time, I saw a lot of changes in the department. My opinion, a lot of the changes were for the best. It was driven both internally and externally, but that's the nature of policing. And I'm glad to be invited here. I hope I can give you my perspective on things, my understanding of how the Brookline Police Department works, and then listen to everybody. Because I've always said, police, police organizations always should change and there's always room for improvement. And I, Brookline, I think, is, is one of those departments. So I look forward to spending the next few months with you. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, Chief. And make sure, my free, oh, I'm good. Thanks so much, Chief. Appreciate you. And, you know, one of the, one of the key things in having someone from the police department represented in this space, you know, I asked Mel about this, you know, I said, I said, will the, will the, the former chief have the keys to the department to get us the data we need? And Mel said, absolutely, that, that Dan will have access to, to whatever it is we need. And we're really fortunate to have all of these, these great town staff here with us to help us work through these problems. Because as we start to try to learn more about our current system or think about ways to, alternative ways to, to accomplish some of the same goals, we're going to need to, to rely on, on folks who, who are in these spaces doing this work right now to help us understand that work. And, and that won't be just limited to the chief in terms of, of policing. We hope to engage with other members of the police department as well, including the social worker in the police department, folks who are doing school resource officer work, folks who are doing walk and talk program, and, and the list goes on and on and on. So, so there's, um, we'll have others from the department in this space as well to help us understand what's currently being done. Devin, I wanted to just also offer an opportunity for, for you to say, hey, to the folks. You are perhaps, you know, along with me, one of the people that members of the task force are going to be communicating with most often. So if you want to say, say hello, hi, anything else you'd like to share?
Thanks, Raoul. For those of you who I have not had the pleasure of meeting yet, my name is Devon Williams. I'm the Director of Administrative Services. I was hired by Mel in October, so I'm just coming up on a year and what a year it's been. I am honored to work in Brookline. This has been an incredible experience so far. And when this task force and committee work began, I'm also serving as the staff person for the Committee on Policing Reforms. I was really grateful that the Select Board looked to me. My main goal is to help you be as efficient and effective as possible. I want to make sure that your time is productive and however I can support you in that, please let me know.
Great. Thanks so much, Devon. I should also say there are three other members of the Select Board attending, just watching. And so, Michael, we are not in violation of open meeting law. But there, there, I appreciate you all being here, as well as other members of the Select Board's Committee on Policing Reforms. I also see some members of that committee in the attendees list as well. Thanks for being here, as well as members of the public. And of course, this meeting is recorded and soon after, we will make sure that the meeting, the video of this meeting is available through, through the website for this particular task force. And then I'll, I'll, I'll share it out and you all are also welcome to share it out as well so that, you know, the maximum number of people in our community can have access to see the work that we're doing. And we'll also make sure that we, that we continue to, to publicize these meetings. So if people would like to join us live, they can do that as well. But one of the benefits of being able to meet virtually during this time is that people don't necessarily need to be in the room to be able to, to access the conversations that are happening in this space. So this is, this is one of those benefits, is we can, we can actually share this video out even for folks that can't be there. So I wanted to get into now, our, our first order of business really is to figure out our work plan. That is, how are we going to move forward and try to, you know, hopefully meet some of the target dates that have been laid out in our charge? But, but most importantly, think through the work that we have to do ahead. So here's my thinking and I'd love to hear yours. It's really important, my, my view in terms of being chair of this task force is to keep the work moving forward, along with Devon, to keep us on time and on task. And, but it is not to, to, to tell you all what to think or to tell you what we should be focused on. In that regard, I'm one voice and you all are also, also represent one voice and we'll decide collectively how we move forward. So, you know, I'm, I'm going to be convening us. I'll be sharing my own views as, as I do in the classroom with my students, very stringently sharing my views, but always, always, always with the idea that you can totally disagree with my perspective on issues. In this room, in this space, I am but one voice. We're all but one voice and we'll decide collectively how to move forward. Okay? So first, you know, my thought is, I think it's important that we get a general presentation on the structure and activities of the police department as soon as possible. I don't take for granted that all of us, even though we've been brought to this work, fully understand how our police department works. And so, so I think, you know, having a presentation and, and Chief, if, yeah, I think you might be able to be helpful here. I, I'm also mindful that we just approved you joining us on Tuesday night. So I want to talk with you just for a moment about, about, about that in just a moment. But, but really us getting an understanding of, first of all, the organizational structure of the department. There are different divisions and different tasks assigned. And for us to understand, more broadly speaking, we can dig deeper as the weeks go on, but more broadly speaking, what are the things that police officers are asked to do on a, on a sort of regular, consistent basis? From there, I think we can start to develop a list of initial questions that we have and then also make requests for data that can guide our work. I will say that, you know, one immediate request that, that I would have would be for a detailed breakdown of, of previous year's 911 calls and direct calls for service. I know that someone had mentioned before, sort of understanding what the community expects and what the community is saying they need, especially in times of crisis and sometimes not in times of crisis, and why they're calling the department, why they're calling 911, what sort of support community members feel like they need. And to see whether or not those are appropriate to be handled by a police department that looks very much like the one we have now or by different bodies. You know, I imagine we'll have many other requests like that and so we'll, we'll count on town staff to help us through those. I'll also note that the Committee on Policing Reforms wants to hold a public hearing with us on the evening of Wednesday, September 30th. From my perspective, a hearing where community members offer guidance on where we should focus our efforts could be very helpful. I will say, one in which supporters of the police department line us, line up to tell us nothing's wrong would not be very helpful. So I do think that our participation as a task force in any kind of joint hearing like that, we'll need to come with some clear guidelines and expectations for what it is, what kind of information and feedback we're trying to get out of that hearing. So I want to make sure that we talk about that today as well before we go. So first, let's hear some feedback on, on this sort of mini-work plan that I just laid out. Chief, what do you think about that, about that first piece about a sort of general presentation on the structure and working of the department?
Would you, would you like me to make a go at, for it?
I would, I would love it if you could.
Sure.
Oh, no, not, not this moment.
Oh, all right.
No, no, I think, so what I think, I, I was thinking more something that would, you know, I, I would love for us to see an updated, up to, up to the minute org chart. I'd love for us to, and maybe others can, this is a good place for others chiming as well in terms of the initial questions you have about the operation of our, of our department. I see Alexander. And by the way, so two things, raise your hand. You can also use, we have the, the benefit of technology, the, the raise hand function. Devin loves that I'm telling you this right now. Under the Participants tab, feel free to use that as well. That helps, that helps me keep track of all the hands that are raised and also lets everyone else in the task force see how long the queue is. And you can always look at the clock and see how much time we have too. If for some reason you're using a device where that's not possible or impractical to do that, you could also just wave your hand at me too. But Alexander, go ahead.
Yeah, one question right off the bat that I would love to hear about, at least the structure and workings of the police department is the...
You can speak up a little bit.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's probably begin. Thanks. I'm curious about body cameras. I'm curious about body cameras. Whether we have them, and to what extent they're used, and what the policy is on when to turn them on, and any other policies on the collection of video from body cams.
Body cameras unfortunately are not in use within the police department. I've been, I was in support of it when I was chief. We're never able to get body cameras or dashboard cameras up and running in the department. It's currently in negotiations between the town and the Brookline Police Association.
I do want to jump in just quickly, because this, I think, came up in the committee's meeting the other night, that there is a restriction in terms of, because the negotiations with the union are ongoing, there are restrictions in place as to whether, you know, the discussions can kind of touch on pending negotiations. So I do want to just kind of throw out that caution, so that we're careful not to reveal some of the conversations that are ongoing with the union and negotiations.
You got it, Michael.
Yeah.
And so, and so right now, what I'd like to hear from members of the task force is, and Chief, let us know as you hear, after you hear, what folks are looking for, whether or not it's practical for even as soon as next Friday to deliver a presentation on sort of, this is our police department, and how it works. So let's start with that. So Anne, how about you?
Am I muted? No, okay. Hi, I want to emphasize again what Raul just asked for. I think that getting access to 911 calls, and what people in the community, why they're calling, and what they're asking for, would be incredibly helpful in terms of our work here. In particular, I would like to know data numbers on how many of those calls are mental health-related, and how many police officers are trained in mental health support, mental health. How many, I think everybody's probably gone through mental health first aid training in the police force, I'm assuming, but how many police officers are involved in a mental health crisis, trained in a mental health crisis situation, and go out on those calls? I'd like any data in particular related to police involvement in mental health crisis calls. And I'm also, I've been asking for this for a while. I'm very interested in the, I'm going to forget the name, the special resource force? Is that the name of the police officers who are trained for like terrorist or unexpected crisis?
The response team.
Thank you. How much money we're putting into that department? I'd like to know what weapons, what military equipment they have, how much money we're spending on that department each year, as well as when they've been used in the community. And so I would appreciate that information. Thank you.
Thanks, Anne. Malcolm?
Thanks, Raul. I'm really curious about evaluation of police. What is sort of the standard evaluation, once you enter the force, and then farther and farther, farther up? As well as how that relates to sort of, I guess for lack of a better term, improvement, or sort of target areas? So if I evaluate someone and say, to follow what Anne says, you know, hey, you haven't done any sort of training or learning in around dealing with cases that deal with mental wellness. What are you going to do before your next evaluation to show you've done something? You know, like, things like that. And education is often referred to as SMART goals, I've heard them in government as well, but like, what does that do? And then, and then what does it mean in terms of promotion? So like, if I didn't do what I would say, hey, what my supervisor told me to do, you know, do I still get promoted through like years of longevity, or anything like that? I'm sure there's competition and other things like that, but it's just really unclear to me. And so I just, I'm not looking, at least at this point, to critique, but I'm really unclear and uncertain of how that works. Particularly, and I'm using another thing, just in sort of point of reference, like when I watched what happened with the Select Board and the fire around, you know, the promotion of someone who used the N-word. To me, when I hear somebody use the N-word as a middle-aged man, I know that's not the first time they use it, and I can't imagine them being a leader. I just can't. Like, if you tell me a forty-plus-year-old man used the N-word for the first time when somebody cut them off in traffic, I'm not really buying that, as a black man. But then to see that person get promoted because of other structures, I want to know if something like that exists within the police. And again, like, I don't know that now. Like, I have no idea. But I am really curious how that actually works, and what is written into both contract as well as procedure for the Brookline Police.
Great, thanks, Malcolm. I think, Chi Chi, were you waving earlier?
Yeah, I was. We're having a little chat in the chat box about trying to find the wave-hand function on Zoom here. A couple of things. First, directly on this topic of what data requests to ask the police department for. I don't know if you mentioned this, but I do remember years ago, there was a report that had some data on different statistics by race, traffic stops and arrests. And, you know, certainly that would be a baseline type of data we'd want. The other request is a bit more amorphous, but kind of critical, which is, you know, when I've talked to folks in power about concerns with policing, I'm constantly told, oh, not Brookline, we have reforms and measures in place to prevent that, but never gotten any specifics. So to the extent you think there, Chief O'Leary, if there's any measures in place that have been taken, you know, obviously we'd like to hear about it. On a different point, I am thinking that folks may have, oh, and the other thing is, folks may have questions or requests for data that they think of after this meeting. Is there the possibility of submitting such requests after this meeting, or do we need to do it in the meeting?
I think that's certainly possible. Devin, what would you say is the best way to go about doing that?
Sure, I think that you folks can email me, and then I can directly give the requests to Chief O'Leary. If you do want him to turn around a presentation by next Friday, I would say that, you know, we'd need a deadline of at least Tuesday to compile everything, make sure that he has enough time to get your data requests in order. So really, you know, Tuesday by noon at the latest, I would say.
Sounds great, thanks, Devin. And then, you know, at some point during this meeting, I don't know if we want to think about timelines or scheduling for other types of topics, you know, other types of data requests, not directly the Brookline Police Department. You know, those five articles that Devin sent out were great. I did look at all of them, and four of them were about models in other cities. You know, do we want to, we want, do we want to have a presentation, or, you know, a discussion about different models? Calendared for one of our next meetings, you know, because October's going to come up real quick.
Sure thing, yeah, absolutely. Chief, go ahead.
Chi Chi, I just wondered if you can clarify what you wanted me to get on measurements. The stats, I know, are given out publicly twice a year for the last twenty-plus years, but you then said you wanted some measures in place, and I didn't quite understand what you wanted those measurements for.
So the stats that are put out twice a year, it probably just good to get them on the record as part of the presentation, even though they're put out publicly to get them on the record for this meeting, and because not everybody might be familiar with them. And then the other request, as I said, is more amorphous, which is, you know, you know, I'm told that measures have been taken so that, you know, things that happen in other communities don't happen in Brookline, but I never get any detail of what these measures are. So maybe there is nothing concrete, in which case, that's the end of the inquiry. But, you know, I am curious if there have been reform measures, what they are.
Okay.
That makes sense. Mel, do you want to jump in here?
I would just like to say, I'm hearing a couple of different things here. I'm hearing one, you know, an interest in getting sort of overview of the police department and understanding sort of how it works, and then a lot of data, which of course, data is essential. I'm not sure how much data we're going to be able to put, detailed data, and, you know, have as part of that presentation next week. I know that the other committee is looking for data, too, and I know we want to be efficient. And, you know, my feeling is, the data that we have, we should get out there, especially to these two committees, to the task force and the committee. So, but my thinking of the presentation, which, you know, is a week from today, is really give you an overview of how the police department works, how people are hired, promoted, evaluated, trained, the kind of general statistics on 911 calls and crime statistics, just an overview. Because, you know, what I'm hearing is a lot of detailed data, which is important, but I'm not sure, you know, how that's going to be done in a week, and how that will give everybody sort of a same layer or level of understanding the police department to move forward with.
Yeah, honestly, I think that makes sense to me. You know, I think, I still want to hear all of the questions you have, or data requests you have in your minds at this moment, but the understanding should be that, you know, likely the best we could do by next Friday is going to be that general presentation that Mel just talked about. And then we can, we can sort of queue up deeper dives into some of either the data you're requesting, or the questions you have about specific programs. Is that safe to say, Chief?
Not to echo what Mel said, but I was going to suggest that, too, that next week just be the overview. I don't know what the vacations are like inside the department, it's close to Labor Day. But I would be more than happy to come in here and give a overall presentation, and then answer questions from the...
To me, yeah. Eton, go ahead.
I have two questions. One is about the data. I mean, obviously, we have folks on the committee, it sounds like Kristen, myself, maybe some others, who are happy to get a big data file and look at it. I was wondering, I have two points of clarification I was wondering about. One is, especially because Anne's, I think, particularly interested in not the mental health cases, if there are confidentiality issues, and if the commission here has the ability to access confidential data and study on a confidential basis. The second question I had is the ability, at some point in the next couple of months during the work of the task force, whether committee members have an opportunity maybe to spend some time with police officers, seeing what they do on a daily basis, and whether there's precedent for that in the town.
On the first question, I wanted to see, I'm looking at Michael, I'm looking at Mel, I'm looking at Anne, around this question around the types of data, and I'm not exactly sure what would be, you know, what you mean by the confidential part of those data, but maybe someone else understands that better than I do.
I just think that a lot of the times with public records requests, I know, a big part of the delay tends to be in, with confidentiality issues. And I just didn't know whether that is an issue that would prevent us from seeing data, and whether the commission has an opportunity to see, really just for the sake of speed of looking at some of the raw data, which we could probably get faster than having the police department actually have to come through things and organize it.
Well, I see Anne's hand up, but let me just say generally that, yes, there are, data is privileged. The state law protects privacy in public data. And so a lot of that, as you pointed out, Eton, a lot of that stuff has to get scrubbed before it is being made public. The question of whether this committee, or a subgroup of this committee, could see that data, I'm not sure, that's more of a legal question, you know, perhaps we might want to protect the town's interests and have a release, or, you know, agreements, you know, confidentiality agreements. I'm not sure, that's more of a legal question, Anne, or Anne's a lawyer, but Michael's our real lawyer, but either you could let us know.
Well, I think, I mean, just answering, or trying to answer the question, you know, theoretically, as opposed to specific instances. I think if it related to, you know, like, specific employees or specific officers, named officers, you know, the privacy protections that are in place for those, that type of information, I think that that would still apply. You know, if it's not subject to the public records law, then I would probably say it's not, you know, proper to be distributing it through this group as well. So I think that's, you know, more of a theoretical answer, as opposed to specific, and we can take it by, you know, in specific instances, and then, you know, try to answer the questions there. But theoretically, I would say that if it, you know, were not subject to the public records law, then it shouldn't be distributed here either.
Anne?
Similarly to Michael, I think you're still going to be subject to the redaction that's going to have to happen on that. So you're going to be looking at anonymized or, you know, conglomerations of, okay, we got thirty mental health cases, and this is how it was broken out by the sixteen precincts, or that kind of thing. You're not going to get individualized reports without having a lot of blacked-out information because of the requirements under state law.
Eton?
That's interesting. I'd like to learn a little bit more about that. I mean, if Raul, as a Select Board member, requests to see that data, is that, he wouldn't, he would be subjected to public records? If he was going to see it as, you know, as an executive officer of the town, he would be subjected to public records limitations?
There are limitations for anyone seeing police report documents that aren't the people involved in them. So any disclosure on documents related to people who aren't the individuals involved.
Okay. I see Mike is, really wants to get in here. Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, so, police reports, generally speaking, are on a particular incident. If you want to look at a police report on a particular incident, I can understand that the names need to be redacted and so forth. But if you're looking for information about the incident without the name, that information presumably is going to be available. So let's make it clear, it's not that we can't find out about incidents, but rather, we can't find out necessarily about the names of the individuals involved. I have two things that I want to make sure that we cover when we get a report, or we get a presentation back.
Mike, can you hang on one second, because I just want to close the loop on this right here.
Okay. Sorry, I have, come back to me, because I have two other questions.
Yeah, don't go anywhere, don't go anywhere. And so, so I think we'll do is, we'll make our request, this is why we have people like Anne and Michael on the task force, is to help us work through, you know, what's possible, what's not. And, you know, I would say that to the, to the extent possible, you know, we want to know as much as we, as we need to know in order to accomplish our charge, if there are some data, whether it's just some redactions that need to be made, or data that are simply inaccessible for some reason, I think it's important that in these public meetings, we make clear to members of the public why it is those redactions needed to be made, or why it is we don't have access to those data. And that that is all something that we share as part of this process, but with the understanding that there are applicable laws and regulations that we may not be able to violate. And so this is why we have experts like Anne and Michael on the task force to help us work through those problems. Right. Mike, go ahead, and I'm mindful that, I know I saw some other folks in the queue, too.
Okay, so very briefly, I'd like to, I know, I've seen a memo from Mel about the impact of the civil service system... I'd like to, I know, I've seen a memo from Mel about the impact of the civil service system that we're a part of on the hiring and retention of police officers. I remember having a conversation with Daniel Leary, one of his chief about this. And the pluses and minuses of being part of that. I think that's an important discussion to make sure that we include. And if it's part of the police presentations, how it works, department presentations to how it works briefly, that'd be great. I'm sure that we'll want to inquire further into that. And with regards to 911 calls, Brookline has something in excess of a hundred thousand calls a year. But when you look at Eugene, Oregon, and the, as a per capita, the per capita number of calls in Brookline is something like three or four times the number in Eugene. And I'd like to know what those calls are about, you know, if we can, if we, when we get the, get information, if there's any way to sort out why we have so many calls, or what things that are not really police matters are being phoned into the, to 911. I think that would be very helpful in terms of allocating resources and figuring out what services should be provided, whether provided by the police or somebody else.
All right, thanks, Mike. Getting to that queue now, I see Almas.
So I know that I heard that, you know, for next week, it's just going to be like a general overview, but for specifics, I'd really like to see like the, the specific objectives of the diversity training that's been done, like how many hours, what actually is being done in those, just so we get an idea of that training. And so training that's done in the past, you know, training that's current, how has it changed, you know, what is it focusing on? So those are some of the specifics I'd like to see. And then, you know, I'd also like to see when, how much, how often is force used? I know I see Anne, Anne Weaver, your comment about unreasonable force, so like, so again, just to add on to what you're saying, like, how often do they use it? Why it's used and what the justification is, whether it was effective, are people injured because of force and and are they released? Like, what's the outcome? Like, you know, you have all this stuff happening, and what really happens? What's the outcome? So was it unreasonable? And so those are some of the specifics I'd like to see as well, the data.
Thanks, Almas. Kimberly?
I want to know how Brookline Police are sent out, like, like, so I've been all around Brookline, but I see so many Brookline police officers near and around Brookline housing and at the high school. So I'm just wondering like, why that is.
Okay. Kristen?
Yeah, thank you. I think that, I don't have a request for specific data, but I'm thinking more about process for the group here. And I think the concern I have is that it feels like we're on the verge of being very busy, but not necessarily knowing why we're very busy. And that is a point of concern for me in that, of course, we want to have an overview of policing so that we know what it is that we are trying to accomplish. What is it that the policing is trying to do for us in the community? And I think then we need the data to say whether or not that thing is happening, or that thing is not happening. If we get really mired down in data, I think we run the risk of having limited time, and then we're all kind of mired in a bunch of data and investigation without knowing why we're really doing it. I think part of what Mike and now Kimberly are starting to unearth are, there are some patterns that we want to try to get to around if we're, have higher incidence of calling, or if we're deploying people in particular places, then I think we need to be mindful of not getting busy before we know why we're busy looking at data.
Great point. I'll also note that we have, we have not, and we won't today, get into exactly the conversation around subcommittee work or other work that happens outside of these meetings. But rest assured, you know, we want to make the best use of the time when we have everyone gathered with these two hours a week that we have together, which means that in some cases, we're going to need a couple of folks to peel off and say, let's dig into these data, and then, and then bring, once we have a better understanding of what those data mean, bring that back to the full, to the full task force, and then all of us get to have a discussion about it. So yeah, I'm very mindful that we need to protect these two hours especially, and make them the most productive two hours of our week possible, and that there'll need to be some other work that happens outside of these meetings in order to make that possible. Malcolm?
So my comment is around the confidentiality. And I can, I can see this to later in the meeting if we want to get more general comments, or however you want me to do it.
So hold that for one second. So so I, so I think we thank you all for, for these requests. And, and so I think just looping right back, Chief, the only expectation we have for next Friday is a general overview of the police department. If you feel like, out of, out of these sort of questions that you've gotten, there are things, we say, well, I can easily talk about that. So I'm happy to include that as part of this presentation. Please go ahead and do so. Otherwise, what we can do is, let's figure out a plan where we can sort of engage in a little bit deeper dialogue around some of those issues, maybe the week after or the week after that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yes, it does. Fine.
All right, terrific. Thank you so much. Malcolm, please go ahead.
So I, I think I just want to say something to be really careful. And I can understand there's there's legal ramification and structures in place. But I think for me, part of reimagining is the idea that police have more protections than the citizens they're supposed to protect. And so we're only being concerned about confidentiality for the police officers and their actions. To me, this committee is going to have real issues. Because I may not personally care if I had filed a complaint or had something around my race. Right? Because most everybody can look at my race and identify it. So personally, I wouldn't do it. But if I was saying we're in a coup and somebody mistook me for my religious identity, or if I was walking, holding hands with one of my oldest friends, and somebody mistook my sexual identity, or any of those other things, I may not want that to be public. And I think what we see that happens, like, think how much information has already been leaked about Jacob Blake and his criminal background in three days, where we've really heard nothing about the police officers in there. And so if we're not thinking in that way, and we're, as we talk about confidentiality, I'm really concerned about the movement of this group. Because to me, that is a clear disparity. That police will get protections through systemic things, right? Through, you know, public information, through laws, through things, through the union negotiation and other things. And if we can't point that out as a differentiation, and point out those things, I'm really worried, because then it's almost impossible to reimagine what policing with our citizenry looks like. And so I just want to put that out there, that I can conceive that there's real issues around confidentiality, but we also have to conceive that structurally, that may be a real problem, and really a key element of the issue in trying to reimagine policing.
I agree. And let's make sure that we, as a task force, push back on that and that we, we press, we press hard for the kinds of, the kinds of information we need to get our job done. The other thing I'll say, because I know questions about police reports came up earlier also, and I'll just say this, I mean, we know racial profiling exists in policing. But, I mean, Chief, if you can find me a police report where an officer says, yeah, I stopped the person because they were black, I mean, I'd love to see it. If we can, if we can find a police report, frankly, where an officer says they made a mistake, I'd love to see it. If we can find a police report where an officer admits that they were rude to a member of the public, I'd love to see it. And yet, and still, we know all these things happen, even if they don't end up in those reports. And so, so is it important to look at that? Perhaps. At those reports, perhaps it is. But, but we should also be, be very clear about what, what isn't going to show up in those places. And if, this is why robust community engagement, Bonnie was talking about this earlier, is, is for that to be a real thing, for that to be a meaningful thing is so important. I'll stop there. Bonnie?
Hey, thanks. A couple of things. One, I wonder if we can post lists of all of these questions so that we can go make sure every single one of them gets a response, and we can all see exactly which ones haven't gotten a response, so that we can make sure for one reason or another, they're being addressed. And also, building on what Malcolm and Kristen were talking about, I wonder, I'd like to propose that we use the term reimagining public safety rather than policing, because when we say policing, we are not starting with a blank slate. We are assuming that some element of policing needs to be here, and we need to tinker with that system. But what, from my perspective, we are talking about is reimagining how every single person here can be kept safe. And that seems to me requires not a reductive process, but an additive process. So if we start with nothing on the line, perhaps we put back policing, or we put back armed officers onto the table. I think that's it.
I, I agree with that, sort of starting from that position. And again, that bar that I'd like to see, you know, unless absolutely necessary, you know, not having armed police respond to incidents, unless, unless there's no other reasonable alternative. And if we start there, then I think, I suspect we're going to find lots of duties that we have put upon police. And by the way, which, which we've heard from, from many police chiefs around the country have said that that is too much to be, to be put upon them, whether or not those can be handled in other ways. And I think, I think we're going to find that the answer, in many cases, is going to be yes. And I saw Chi Chi waving.
Yeah, thanks, Raoul. And thanks, Bonnie, for that excellent point. I wanted to follow up on Malcolm's point, because it made me think of something, the restrictions around confidentiality originate in state law, and that's what constrains us. And it made me think of the other legal doctrines that really privilege police, and that's qualified immunity, and whether we want to look at whether anything from a town perspective can be done on that. Because that is, you know, a very problematic legal aspect of the interactions between police and citizenry. And that also made me think of the earlier discussion about body cams and the unions. And, you know, there's been a lot of discussion of the role of police unions and how they contribute to some, some of the problems we've seen on racial justice issues. And so whether we want to examine the role of police unions too. So I'm just sort of pinning topics we may want to consider for future conversations.
You know, and I think what we're going to have to figure out along the way, and it's okay that we don't have that figured out in our very first meeting, is that we do have this other committee, this Committee on Policing Reforms. And so we're, what we're going to have to figure out in the next, I'd say, next couple of weeks is what, what is, what are we most uniquely situated to focus on? I think, I think that question that Bonnie raised is an important one for us, right? And so when we talk about the use of, of body worn cameras, you know, we can talk about it. I might argue, that's really a question for the reforms committee, right? Like, what is the, what is the, you know, that, you know, the safety, transparency, and accountability of the way that we currently, our current approach to public safety, which is overwhelmingly involved with the deployment of armed police officers, that's really, those are by and large questions for the, for the reform committee, I would say. What are the things that the community says they need, and that we are asking police to do? And whether those can be handled by body, by, by departments and individuals outside of, of the police establishment? That feels more like a question for us. And the way, you know, and an essential question that we could ask, why do we need a police department at all? I think is, I think is a fair question, right? And being able to, so it's, it's, it's on this task force to come up with alternatives. But I also think that it is fair for this task force to question the police department to say, you know, some of the questions I asked earlier, you know, prove to us empirically that we need officers inside of schools, and that that has benefits for students of color. Is that something that our department can, I don't know. Maybe. I'll, I'll get, let's give them a shot. Let's give them a chance. But if we can't empirically prove that something we're spending significant resources on, time, energy, and finances is actually beneficial to the community at large, but importantly, for our work, communities of color and others disproportionately impacted by policing, well, why should we continue to do it if we don't know that it actually works and that it actually produces benefits? What is the purpose over, I mean, there's some questions we have about, what is the purpose anyway? The same with the walk and talk program at the Brookline Housing Authority, and the list goes on. And so traffic enforcement, all this. These are things that, that I think we should be challenging the department about, to provide empirical evidence that these, this is the best way to handle whatever it is they're trying to handle or meet the objectives that are laid out as part of those programs. And then it's up to us, if we think that maybe there's a better way, that's where we come in, and it's up to us to find some alternatives. Mike, I saw your hand, and Aton?
Thanks, Raoul. So I think Bonnie's, Bonnie's comment about reimagining public safety, reimagining policing, to me, I think it's very important to start with a clean sheet of paper in our, in our minds. And I don't know, I don't mind whichever term is used. I do think it's important to remember that one of the reasons we're here is, sure, the, sort of, the, the, the thing that's caught everybody's attention at last is the, the the shootings of, of black Americans, black males by police officers unjustified, completely unjustified from, from all appearances. And just the same in Brookline, the vast number of interactions that people complain about when they talk to each other are stop, traffic stops, a kid walking down the street in a hoodie, stopped by a police officer asking what he's doing there. They're much smaller interactions, but there are, there are far, far more of them. And I don't want us to lose sight of the day to day interactions that occur between whatever public safety force we have in place. And I also think it's really important to recognize that we're, the police force is trying to balance what citizens ask for and what people like us are asking them to, to do. So when you talk about police officers in the schools, one of the reasons that police officers got put into schools have been the number of school shootings, you know, the craziness that, that has happened in, in, in some communities that, that everybody is very concerned to avoid. School safety is something that, that is at the forefront of that, of that kind of concern about is certainly the forefront of the, of a lot of parents' minds. Then you have to say, well, what's the collateral damage from that? And how can we make sure that there isn't any collateral damage, or that we minimize it, at least, having that, that presence in the schools? So it's really important to remember those two things. One is the vast number of interactions that, that people, the vast majority of interactions that people of color have with police officers has nothing to do with with force or crime. It has to do with just day to day, day to day activities of the police. How much of that needs to be done? And how much of it needs to be done differently? And then balancing off what the community at large is looking for from its police force, and making sure that if there's something that the community at large wants, it doesn't cause collateral damage.
All right, we've got just five minutes left, and I want to make sure if folks have something to say, if we can take sixty seconds each, because these meetings will start and they will end on time. Okay? Aton, you good?
Yeah.
Okay, Alexander? You good? Anne?
I just wanted to respond to Mike. I, that's not why I'm here. The shootings and the murders that are happening this summer are terrible, and obviously, things need to change nationally because of the violence and the murders that are happening toward people of color by police. But I just want to speak for myself, and I'm assuming that some of the other members of this task force probably agree with me that that's not why I'm here. I'm not here because of the murders this summer. I'm here because there's been a long history of racism in the Brookline Police Department and toward people of color. And we need to change in the Brookline Police Department, and toward people of color, and we need to change the system, and we need to keep people safe in this community through community-based organizations, and through interactions when needed with people who can support them, who do not have weapons and are not part of the police department. Thanks.
Thanks, Anne. Appreciate you. So, you know, I'll just end by saying a few things. One, we know what's happening next week, we'll have a presentation by my former chief, Daniel Leary, on the current construction of the police department. I encourage everyone to review their website, review the policies and procedures, review the, the handbook that is there, review police contracts, which you'll be able to find online as well, review everything, so we can have a very informed discussion next Friday, so that you've, you've done some of the work to, to, to understand on your own, as much as you can, about, about the department, based on what's visible on the, on the website there. That'll, I think, end up making our conversation on Friday a more fruitful conversation. And one other thing, this body is subject to, to the open meeting law requirements, which mean, which means that we can't have a quorum of the body meeting outside of these particular meetings unless it is an actual public meeting. We'll, we'll talk about, about more of this in the future. What you need to know between, between now and next Friday is, we won't have listserv discussions and things like that, although I think those would be really terrific and helpful, but that's not something this body can do. If you have any questions about that, Devin will be a great resource for understanding what's okay and not okay, but everyone on this body is expected to, to go online, look at the OML requirements. Lynda Goldberg will be sharing some information too, I think, or actually, I think Devin already did, so please take a look at that. You know, last thing I'll say is that the information, we talked about some articles, those were sent to members of the task force, we're going to also make sure that that ends up on the task force website for any members of the public that want to see what these articles are. That website, I believe, is going to be updated on Monday, so keep an eye out for that. And finally, you know, there's a window of opportunity here. It's, it's a window that's been created by folks who have been marching in the streets, not just since March, but for years, around these issues, and trying to, to awaken the consciousness of, of, of others who, who have, who have sort of sat on the sidelines and watched these injustices happen for far too long, and they are small, and they are large, they are about the murders of folks, and they are about the everyday indignities that folks face at the hands of policing, even in communities like ours. You know, I want to make sure that, that we take advantage of this awakening that's taking place right now, of this window of opportunity that is open right now, and that you understand that our work is urgent, and it is necessary. So, let's get to it. All right? Thanks, folks. I will see you all again, eight AM next Friday. If you have any questions, please reach out, and, and be sure to reach out to Devin with any technical questions, or anything like that. Appreciate y'all. Have a great night.